All this meeting of the Beaufort County School District Academic Committee to order. I see that County Channel is broadcasting this. So at this point, the first thing that we will do is please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
It stands one nation. Undivided in liberty and justice. Okay. I'd like to welcome our visitors and our participants. Mr. Earl Campbell, Ms. Dermic, I'm gonna really botch that name. I have no, is there a vowel in that last name?
Just one.
Yeah, come on now. My phonics instruction would take me off a bit. And I also saw Ms. Frida on here at some point. Okay, so.
Ms. Boatwright is on as well.
Oh, great. I didn't see Ingrid. Great. Ingrid, I was in your neighborhood today. Have to, I'll have to chat about that. Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda. I will be remiss if I don't say that Ms. Middleton, our third committee member, is unable to join us today. She found out late this afternoon that she had a work commitment that came up last. So it will be, the committee will consist of Mr. Mel Campbell and myself today. So, Mr. Campbell, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
That being the case, yes ma'am, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for our April twenty seventh committee meeting.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda. I asked Robin, she said we did not have any public comments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so next item on our agenda is the approval of our March twenty fourth committee meeting minutes. I hope that you had a chance to look at them in advance. And Mr. Campbell, I'm wondering if you would be willing to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one committee meeting.
Great, and I'll second that. Any discussion?
No, ready for the vote.
Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
Okay, so our minutes have been approved. So moving along with our agenda is addendum for middle school students' grades and retention. So these are actually ARs and they, it covers IS thirty and IS forty eight. Let me remind the public and the board, we don't approve ARs. ARs are under the purview of the superintendent. So the expectation from the board is that the board is notified of changes that are made to ARs. We can certainly question or ask for further clarification, but they're not for us to approve. So at this point, Dr. Stratus, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Mrs. Robine, and I want to say thank you to our board members for allowing for this time. If I could be able to take the moment to introduce membership who are here to present and the rationale of why. We will have Mrs. Dermic, Ms. Dermic, Meredith is her first name presenting. She works as our hearing officer. She's also working at keeping close eye to our student disciplinary data, MTSS behavior data, monitoring of truancy, as well as keeping updates to our student code of conduct. This summer, she will be working with summer school predominantly. It's a new task for her. She's had some great guidance. With that, one of the individuals who works very close with her and our officer for ISD is Dr. Nikia Campbell. And then we've asked also Pat Frida, our principal for Hilton Head Island Middle School, was part of the committee for this amendment to join with us this afternoon. So with that, Ms. Dermic, I'm turning, turning it over to you, young lady. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stratus, and good afternoon, board members. So like Dr. Stratus mentioned, we had conversations with our middle school principals. And if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide, Robin, thank you. And we were discussing the plans for summer school and we were looking at our administrative regulations and realized that IS thirty and IS forty eight pose a couple of barriers for our middle school students. The main purpose of this addendum is to eliminate those barriers for our students. We, the COVID nineteen pandemic highlighted some challenges for students. And the pandemic was not any fault of theirs. And so in order to offer opportunities for student success, we want to eliminate as many barriers as possible that we as a department can. And a department, I mean instructional services. We received input from our stakeholders. Ms. Frida was part of the conversation with principals that we, who, after hearing, you know, from teachers and looking at their data, they wanted to be able to off, offer students an opportunity to have that content recovery. In addition to things that they're already doing in their schools. They're doing content recovery. They're utilizing after-school tutoring and Saturday school programming. They're utilizing MTSS plans. All of that, they still have barriers due to this regulation. And it is a time-sensitive issue because we want to be able to inform principals of the summer school plans because summer school starts approximately in six weeks. So Robin, if you could go to the next slide, thank you. So our current language speaks to two ARs, IS thirty, which is summer school, and then IS forty eight, which is promotion, retention, and exploration of students. And currently, both ARs share a lang, a common language that the maximum load allowed during summer school is two units of work. And that applies for high school and middle school as it currently reads. Additionally, it reads right now that students in grade six through eight may recover only two failed core course subjects if a summer school opportunity is offered. And that students will be retained if they fail more than two subjects. So, the next slide, yes ma'am? So due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the following addendum or amendment is being proposed effective immediately as a need for, to eliminate those barriers for our students. So the proposed addendum is that the maximum lotto load in summer school, load allowed in summer schools, excuse me, is two units with the exception of students in grade six to eight. This does not violate anything in the state chapter forty-three regulation, which only speaks to students in grades nine to twelve. And then additionally, in regulation IS forty eight, we would change students in grade six through eight may recover up to four failed core course subjects if a summer school opportunity is presented and then students who failed more than two subjects may be retained. To give schools the flexibility and the opportunity to give students an opportunity to show their proficiency in the content. And so that is the proposed addendum. And there is a need for this addendum. Ms. Frida, if you would like to share anything about the conversation that we had, you are welcome to do so at this time.
You're muted.
I can share my numbers of failures with you to kind of give you a picture of what we're dealing with. And all of the, my partners in the middle school have relatively the same kind of numbers as I do. Right now, I have two hundred and eleven students who are failing one or more subject. And so we have begun what we are calling our Recovery Packet Program. We work with students right now who are failing just one to try and help them with their first semester grade. And we have put this in place. They go during lunch in their ATL period, which gives them about an hour. And we're trying to get those students off of the failure list and then maintain them for the rest of the year. But I do have quite a few who are failing two and three and four classes. Most pertinent to this amendment would be the forty-seven children I have failing three and four course, four courses for the year. So we're not going to get everybody off the summer school list, but if we could bring that down somewhat to the numbers that we normally have. In previous years, probably I've had forty to fifty, maybe top sixty kids in summer school. Two hundred and eleven, I, I won't be able to get teachers to do that for me. And I don't know that we have the money to pay that many teachers either. And what you mentioned, Meredith, is very true. This, the state that the students are in right now is not their fault. We had a rough year. And the beginning of that year started virtually and then went to hybrid and face-to-face. But many of our schools' students are still working virtually. And I have to tell you that they still are struggling on the virtual side. Once we can get them back in school, we do see tremendous improvement because they're with their teachers every day and they're captive audience in a classroom. We can't make them get on Zoom. We can't make them participate through virtual learning. So in the best interest of students, I, I truly believe that this would be the right thing for us to do in order to get them to a status where they either have to, they're off the failure list or they have to attend summer school. Is their learning loss? Absolutely. And I think the concentration should be on repairing the learning loss through our summer school programs and through programs that we then initiate in the fall when students come back. Can we fix it? Yeah, we can. It's just gonna take some time and get, get them caught up to where they need to be. But as educators, we know that retention is really not a good thing for students. It, it is, you know, a last resort that we, we go to, but it, it never proves to be fruitful for them in the long run. It's better to try and give them some extra support and help them to make up the things that they've lost or what they did not get during the year.
Thank you, Ms. Frida. And that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I will be happy to attempt to field them.
Okay, I'll start with the questions. And then, somebody's echoing, okay? And then I will defer to, Mr. Earl Campbell has his hand up. Will summer school be in person or will there be a virtual option?
Summer school is face-to-face, Mrs. Robine.
Excellent. From my standpoint, I think that's where it's gonna make the most meaning. Okay, Mr. Earl Campbell?
Yes. Those students that have failed, say, are failing two to three classes, they will have to go to summer school, right?
Yes, sir. Someone's echoing that. So as the administrative regulation is currently written, only students who have failed one or two courses are able to attend summer school. So we wanted to amend the administrative regulation to offer the opportunity for additional students who, students who have failed three or four courses to be invited to participate in summer school.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes. Oh, Dr. Stratus has her hand up.
Well, I, I just want to bring notice to the grading model for middle school. If we look at our four-point, you know, the four-point scale, an A is four, B is three, C is two, right? A D is one and F obviously is zero. A middle schooler who during full virtual, who was off track, who may have earned a D or an F first quarter, right? And then let's say they earned a D second quarter. They have basically failed the course for the year because a predominant amount of our middle school courses go for the whole year as well. So that's another construct that I think builds on to the numbers that we're looking at because we went from virtual to hybrid to face-to-face. So we were walking in already and as we remember prior conversations that we had had higher failure rates at the marking periods that we were monitoring. And now that I, you know, we've gone face-to-face, our failures have slid down. But we have children who have already basically failed a year, right? So I know Mrs. Frida is addressing the makeup of, but if I'm a kid who was in that syndrome already with three courses, I already have learned helplessness. So I, I just wanted to share that, that light on the grading model to how, you know, middle school and those are full-year courses versus the high school for course recovery.
Kathy, you're muted. See if I can unmute you. Yeah, I got it. Mr. Mel Campbell?
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Bunch of stuff, I guess, but let's start with Ms. Frida's suggestion that we won't be able to afford to handle a number of students. I think the idea behind these adjustments in regulation is that our numbers are going to go up and exceed normalcy because of the pandemic and other reasons of virtual schooling, et cetera, et cetera. But obviously, there's a need for a larger number of students in summer school as, as we're anticipating, or we wouldn't be here with this adjustment to the regulations. So the, the number two thing is, is this a part of the plan to remedy some of the negatives of the virtual school results of grades and et cetera, overtime? Not only students who are failing, but students who didn't achieve what they expect. Only failing students allowed in summer school? Or are there gonna be more students? Is this a plan? And I guess this is Dr. Stratus's question or Dr. Rodriguez's. Is there a plan to do an extensive summer school program? Or is there a plan to focus on the kids who are in dire straits?
So, Mr. Campbell, the way, i- if I may, team members, the way we designed summer school, we have designed it to be an open opportunity and we have obtained funding to have kids from K through eight in transitional years as well as our high school, right? To have course recovery. But we designed it as well to have catch-up for learning. One of the challenges we're being faced with right now, and we are working with HR, is hiring of personnel. We, at currently, and this is as of yesterday, when I cross-checked, we have sixty-eight teachers hired for reading recovery. I don't have all the numbers yet for this program because reading recovery, we recognize is third grade. We just, this afternoon, obtained enough teachers to fortify our sister, gifted and talented. So we had put a deadline of April fifteenth for your application to teach, and now we've turned to advertising and looking at recruiting prior retired teachers and opening, you know, the opportunity for those who are certified. So we're in apple track because we don't have enough teachers responding right now only because they've, they've had a challenging year as well.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so our, our, Mr. Campbell, our heart is in the place to give every child an opportunity, but we want to be able to keep to a ratio. Obviously, for third grade, we're keeping fifteen to one. We want to keep that ratio across the board. Or why do you get fifteen and I get twenty-five? High school's a little different because they're all gonna be on an electronic platform at the school site with office hours as well. We, we just don't have enough teachers or retired teachers who may have taught algebra coming back, isn't it?
So, I mean, the quote, what my parents would say, your, your eyes are bigger than your stomach.
Always.
So.
Always.
How are we going to make that adjustment? I mean, obviously, like you say, teachers know. I would, if I was there, look forward to volunteering for summer school after the year that I've had. And I'd, I'd want to take some time off to recover and especially not knowing what September or August is gonna bring in terms of the new year.
Yeah, yeah.
So are, are we gonna prioritize the most needy?
Yes, sir. So we will be prioritizing, obviously, our requirement for state by state for retention at third grade. And then the next priority will be our students to avoid retention at the middle school as well as at, at the elementary, but they're, they don't have the same issue as our middle school principals brought forward with a strong voice.
Now, go back to your comment, third grade, the state does not mandate that they retain. They suggest, right, or?
The Read to Succeed Act. The Read to Succeed Act has not been waived. So that act does have a requirement with regard to students if they're not meeting the pre- imposed and our pre- imposed for summer is gonna be math testing. Students coming in at or above one seventy, a score of one hundred and seventy-seven at reading will have been determined to be successful. So we're still held, we're still held.
I thought that reg red that they may be retained, not necessarily have to be, but anyway.
I may have missed that as my last reading on Read to Succeed. And we were through that last week. That hadn't shifted yet.
Okay.
And we are required to do face-to-face, but I will see if something else has come out since then.
All right. All right, that answers my questions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ms. Boatwright?
Thank you. So Pat, Ms. Frida, you said it's two hundred and some students right now that are at risk of retention. What is the percentage of, of total middle school does that represent?
For me, that's probably about twenty percent.
And that, you said that's pretty standard across the districts. I mean, obviously, not exactly, but.
Well, our numbers, you know, our, our enrollments are gonna change from school to school. I have eight eighty-two right now, I believe.
Okay. So, but that's, that's a significant percentage of middle school students.
We don't usually have that.
Right. And then my other question is, is there, can you explain? I think you already answered it when you talked to Mr. Campbell, Mrs. Dr. Stratus. Can you just clarify why it's, we're specifying sixth to eighth grade? I know why we're not doing high school, but like third, fourth, and fifth. Why, why are we looking just at sixth and eighth?
The state requirement for retention is at third grade. Many of the elementary have worked with their own children within their school building. And they've had a larger response for the two-point-O program for providing additional instruction and identifying success with key standards that are being instructed during, during our after-school program. So they're having a little more success with attendance as well. But the only area we have required retention at elementary is at the third grade. So generally, the elementary principals do work with extending summer opportunity after school, showing mastery, MTSS, a little more diversity in differentiation of instruction. That same model is not written into our AR. We do have a retention.
Wendy Cartlidge, join the meeting.
I should say a retention administrative regulation.
Thank you.
And I was looking at, we're, we're about forty-two hundred middle schoolers. So I started playing with the math a little bit, Mrs. Boatwright, but that we're about forty-two thirty. So I started playing with the math, um, a little bit, Mrs. Boatwright, but we're about forty-two thirty.
Thank you, Dr. Stratos.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we anticipate that this change to the AR will be just for a year and will go back? Or how will we evaluate whether this change should stay?
This is, Ms. Dermic, would you like to pick that up with Dr. Campbell?
Oh, I, I can. I don't know where, um, Meredith, you wanna, I can.
I was gonna say, I'll start and then I'll just.
Okay, sounds good.
So, Ms. Robine, the intent for the current amendment is just for this summer. However, we do long-term want to revise both of these administrative regulations. And so we want to continue having conversations with principals to get their input before making more permanent revisions. This addendum is just for this summer, again, because like I mentioned, the time sensitivity issue. Dr. Campbell?
I, I agree with what you said. I think it's gonna take us a little bit more time to really go deep into this administrative reg. Both IS forty-eight as well as IS thirty. It talks about retention, acceleration, other components outside of just retention. That's gonna require additional time to really dig deep. Um, when we met with our principals a few weeks ago, just the shift, the mind shift. I think there's some, you know, shifts from when we established this particular AR that we need to kind of bring to light in an updated AR for IS thirty and IS forty-eight.
Thank you.
If I may share, Mrs. Robine, we also, once they get, go through committee, um, they wanna, we need to include the high school principals for voices as well. Right? After half efficiency markers because we need to recognize that these are the children also who will be feeding to the high school.
Right.
So it's a committee, a, a little more holistic approach of who's gonna be on that committee.
Well, I'm certainly glad we're doing, taking, that you're taking some action. It's pretty obvious that our students have been affected. Um, many students have been affected, uh, greatly by, by the, the schooling, the difference in schooling this year due to the pandemic and to try and, you know, do what we can. I think it's important that we do what we can to give them the additional support that they need. Mr. Campbell, is your hand still up?
Yes, it's just hung up.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, uh, I'm thinking about what was just said, uh, Dr. Campbell. Is there a, a, a plan, a process in place to, to do something a lot more extensive? At least in the elementary schools concerning summer school and the, well, use a better word, the manning of summer school? I mean, we're probably never gonna get enough certified teachers to to advocate for that extended program during the summer. Is there a, a way that we can create a summer program that might utilize other kind of tutorial, uh, efforts that not necessarily tie into the, the grades per se, but can tie in quite a bit to the, uh, enrichment and support and development of, of students so that they are able to go on to the next year? I mean, I don't see that we need certified teachers for every situation of summer school. And I, you know, I, going forward, we're in a, we're in a situation now where going forward, we have to service a lot more children in terms of support.
Mr. Campbell, I can, I can offer a program that we did at Bluffton Middle and I did hear two years ago for ESOL students where it wasn't necessarily that, that, that they had failed, but it was more of a continuum of, continuum, um, of learning for them because of their language acquisition. And so they were invited and, um, you know, we did have ESOL teachers who came and taught them for the month. Uh, but it was specifically to keep the learning that they had absorbed during the year intact and not have that fallback during the summertime. So I, it's an example of, I think, what you're talking about.
Exactly, it is.
And it could be an extension to other, um, groups of students as well.
Can I piggyback on what you just said, Pat Frida? Many, many of our principals try to remediate immediately and not wait until the summer. So they're doing that recovery within a marking period. So you see a lot of kids after school or Saturday or built in within the instructional day trying to recover before summer school. But we know that there's an importance of having summer school because we don't want that summer slide. So we need to have that component as well. So I think a blend of all, all, all factors would be, um, beneficial to our students.
I agree.
No, because you probably investigate the evidence and evidences of that short-term recovery is generally, is just time and seat as opposed to, you know, getting the information that's needed to sustain going to the next grade level. So, yeah, I mean, recovery is one thing, but I, I'm basically talking about kids who may be passing still not really achieving it. We got a summer program that if they wanna come, that we can, you know, assure that they'll be attended to with professional care, not necessarily certified professional care. And I'm just saying, if we're gonna, you know, start thinking about doing something just for one summer, we need to start looking at a, a much more extensive summer school program because it's, it stands beyond our one pandemic issue. It extends to the achievement gap and other gaps that we've had systemically over time. So that's what I'm, I'm referring to. Yes. Dr. Stratos.
So i- if I'm hearing correctly, if we're looking at extending opportunities, if so, we're looking on classified personnel. We have to take it out of an instructional model and look at more of a summer camp opportunity. So our pay rate would be different. We wouldn't be required under state, state reg where it has to be a teacher of record. Right? In order, right? So, so what we're talking is the opportunity of running parallel programs. And instead of having a certified teacher do an enrichment through a summer camp.
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I just want, you know.
That's what I'm hearing. Yes, sir.
Finally, moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
If we tie it to some of the regs, we're not gonna be able to do that. Uh, they, they won't be able to get seats and they won't be able to continue. And next year, they'll be in this group of two hundred and eleven that Ms. Frida is talking about. Because they'll continue to have a revolving group that's falling below in that nine-month period.
Let me get with our team to pitch that because it isn't, it is a different model in the sense of maybe putting classified personnel for in, for camp activity because we have designed the idea of diving back into school, having fun and see if we could do, run things parallel. And we may not be draining from the certified personnel for the necessary area. I understand, Mel. We have a principal meeting all day tomorrow. I have time on Thursday that I can sit with our, our team and pitch the idea a little more. And I, I did want to show, I tried to get Melissa Murray, but she didn't pick up. She's on holiday. But, um, I see we, you're, the direction you're going in, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, um, questions or comments regarding the ARs? Okay, doesn't look like it. Thank you very much. So Dr. Stratos and team, this will be presented to the board at the next regular board meeting, the May fourth meeting, I assume. And we can do it as part of the academic committee meeting and you can just present those two slides or the slot, the PowerPoint. I think that would, uh, be sufficient. Does that sound like a plan?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the next item on our agen- agenda is discussion of OEs related to instructional services. Before we begin that discussion, I did want to revisit the scope of work that was approved on September fifteenth for the academic committee. The scope that was approved was scope of work that focuses on PE one, which is now OE twelve, PE six, which is now OE thirteen, and other topics as assigned by the chair or the board. So that's the scope of the academic committee to really focus on these OEs and to, um, of course, be the, the sounding board for the ARs that are appropriate. So I just wanted to preface that, uh, before we begin our discussion. So, Dr. Stratos, did you, did you have anything you'd like to say about the OEs?
Well, our last conversation, Mrs. Robine and on board members, we spoke about the OEs, um, everything being due at one time. When I look and review the depth of the OEs, it's significant amount to be done at one time. So I'm, I'm trying to get a little more guidance, um, regarding do we just wanna have a narrative? Do you wanna have a portfolio? Thank, thank you, Mrs. Cushenberry. Do we wanna have a portfolio of evidence that could be reviewed? Because given that when we had looked at the timing of presentation, then I would ask for reconsideration or I would go back to senior staff as we do our superintendent's interpretation and maybe shift like OE twelve. If I'm correct, I think it had seventeen, one of them has about.
It has seventeen, yes.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say seventeen, you know, components.
Right.
So I, I wanted to add, get some guidance with that so that we could work effectively. So do we want a book of evidence? Do we want a narrative that just says real quick, this was done when? Because that will make a big impact as to the timing or the effectiveness of doing, completing all seventeen reporting, you know, at one time.
Right. And I, you know, I have in my notes that, uh, you were going to, to see about moving OE twelve to the work session in August.
Yes, but we know.
Right. So now the question is, uh, if we move this OE to August with seventeen components.
That's half the day.
Yeah. Well, it would have to be, I, I think it would have to be just a specific work session just to address this OE. What would the format be? What would the reporting look like? I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That, would we, and I'll give you an example. Let, let's look at item eleven. Select textbooks and instructional materials that advance the achievement of the board's results, policies, and the end that achieve continuity, integration, articulation of the curriculum by course and program. By state regulations, the, we recognize that our textbook cycle will be coming up to a social studies cycle this, this year. In two years, there should be a science. The state requires representation across work from publishers to demonstrate where all the standards are. So that's an easy one. That's a narrative. We, we can report if we had an adoption this year or if we did, if we did not have an adoption this year. The regs and same thing happens with number twelve. Some of these are very easy. At, but you, number thirteen, adequate, adequately monitor and control student access to the utilization of electronic distributed information. Would that be a student code of conduct that they sign off as they take their electronic device? So that's what I'm trying to define. What would suffice? Or should I just wait to provide that within the superintendent's interpretation? But I still understand as an expectation.
Right. And I think that the superintendent's interpretation has to come first.
Okay.
And, you know, he interprets it. Cause when I go back to number eleven.
Okay.
You know, you focused in on the textbooks. However, there's instructional materials that advance the achievement of the board's results policies. So right now, our board's result policies address the, um, reading and math scores of, of grades three through eight and, you know, the, uh, I'm, I'm trying to pull it off my head. So those, and, and the, um, achievement gap, the different groups. So to me, I would expect, so what, are there specific instructional materials that are being used just to meet, though, look at the results, what are we expecting? And we've got these special materials or these materials that we think are going to meet that.
Okay. And, and, and in that language, it makes it a lot easier because my brain went to state adopted versus district adopted and the purpose of, purpose of that use. Cause we technically, we don't adopt, we say this is what you're gonna do, you know? So yes, yes. So when you put into that context, it makes it a, a lot easier because yes, we do have instructional materials. Case in point, you know, drink, dream box, head spreads, eye ready. Um, reading plus, which is now extending into ninth and tenth grade, achieve three thousand. You know, for ESOL, curriculum gold for pre-K. So yes. I, I could see that. I could see that in a chart. Would make it a lot easier. So yes, okay.
Right. And I, I think the textbook thing is that narrative that you just said, you know, we, we follow the schedule that the state sets out and the, the narrative. Mr. Campbell, did you have your hand up again?
Well, I didn't ever take it down, but, uh, the standpoint of, of this discussion, I would think that we would allow Frank and Mary to present their interpretation. Hopefully, those interpretations would extend a bit beyond the board's interpretation so that we can come to some agreement on where we would wanna stop and where we would wanna extend because extending in terms of the academics would be the purview of the superintendent, especially when we have tasked him with certain results. And if we fix him, then that takes away some of the flexibility of getting those results that we have, you know, tasked him with. For example, material use that you just mentioned, Katia, yeah. They should come with more than just those textbooks. It should come through as a, a number of auxiliary material that they expect us to adopt as acceptable use. If, if in fact, they're gonna do some things to cover the, the, the cross-cultural of student population that we have. So all of those things, I think, gives them an opportunity to explore and bring to the board their interpretation of what we want. And hopefully that interpretation is sometimes, uh, you know, uh, a measuring stick of, of our visions. Does that make any sense? Uh, maybe, you know?
Yeah. I'm just think, uh, Ms. Boatwright, and then I have a thought. Go ahead, Ms. Boatwright.
Okay. Um, I'm happy to wait till after your thought, but I think, you know, this is part of the, the, the process of kind of wrestling through this new framework and this new tool that the board's approved and everyone's trying to understand the parameters. And I've done, I did as much research as I could in terms of trying to find other boards who have successfully implemented this model and how they use these things. And one thing I noticed, several, uh, districts, what, they view these OEs like a hook. And you can hang a lot of different things on these hooks, right? And at the end, wherever, however that calendar comes out, you say, okay, we've got all this, all these things hung on this hook. Does that satisfy the entirety of the OE? So like when we're talking about digital, um, I don't think we have to try and, this will be a conversation with Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Stratos, but rather than trying to limit it and saying, what do you want to see and how can we provide it? I think when they've got something that comes up and we're like, okay, this is a new thing we're doing with. I think when they've got something that comes up and we're like, okay, this is a new thing we're doing with cybersecurity because we've got this new network and present it to the board and you say, this is part of OE. I forget what it is. It's not on the screen right now. And it's more to tie what the district is doing onto an OE as opposed to trying to tie an OE. You know, it's looking at it the other way. That doesn't make much sense. But I think that might be a more useful thing is that rather than trying to pre-frame all of our discussions, say, whatever Dr. Stratos and her team bring to the board, how does it fit in to one of these OE sections? If that makes sense.
Well, I hear what you're saying. And this is the problem that we've had before with the PEs. There wasn't an agreement as to what substantiated compliance with the PE. So the instructional services department would do all this work and bring us all this information. And we'd look at it and go, but does this satisfy? Does this meet with this PE, which is now an OE, states? So that's what, one of the prefaces with this is that it's agreed upon upfront, what, how it's going to be measured. So the question is, so, and I guess what what you're talking about, you know, do we say, how are we going to measure OE twelve in its entirety?
Yeah.
Like, or how are we, how are we going to measure OE twelve point one one, selecting that type of thing? Yes, that's the wrestling point, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a huge wrestling point. And from my point of view, I wonder, and I don't know, I'm just spec, you know, kind of looking at this. If, you know, basically, I mean, these instructional OEs are kind of nebulous, right? Like, because we basically, like, we want good, we want student achievement and here's some, but it shouldn't encompass everything, you know, that the district does, and it shouldn't limit in terms of what the board reports to us. I think maybe you look at OE compliance as here's, you've met the minimum requirement, but that doesn't mean that all this other stuff doesn't still apply to these OEs. Or do you have to say, you have to meet all the, do we have a maximum amount of things that are required to meet the OE? Or do we have like a threshold to be in compliance? But this is kind of esoteric.
Yes. When these were PEs, prior to them becoming OEs, each one of these would be its own individual thing that was brought to the board and presented. And the board would say whether it was compliant or not. Now, there weren't any measures of complacency. You know, there wasn't anything predetermined how things were going to be measured. It was just interpretation of here's PE one point three, because it was PE one. Let me see if I can grab my. So let's see. So PE one point one was provide equitable and challenging learning experience that ensure all students have significant opportunities to develop learning, thinking, and life skills that lead to success at the next level. So a presentation would have been made on that. Then PE one point five, monitor and adjust curriculum, instruction, and assessment systematically in response. So I don't, you know, I don't know how to, to, we're kind of designing this new approach to the OEs as we go is the best thing that I can say. Because before, from my standpoint, and again, this is just me, but when things were presented, the PEs were presented to the academic committee, there were several instances where the staff had done a lot of work. They gathered all this data, they presented it to us, and the academic committee kind of looked at all that and said, huh, is that what, is the information you presented us, does it meet what that OE, what that PE says? And I don't know if you remember this, but at one point, Mel, remember when we got all this information? And we said, oh, that's really PE one point three instead of PE one point one?
Yes.
And then we, you know, it was good information, but it didn't match the what the PE said. So that's why, you know, thinking, starting with the agreement as to what is actually going to be measured in these, that's why that seems to be important.
These things are so hard to measure.
I think the process, yeah, it is that, Ms. Boatwright. At the process that we're engaged in now primarily is let's communicate and let's tell you where we're thinking in terms of this particular OE. And my mindset is that sometimes the presentation has to be minimal and not very extensive. Because the conversation is minimal at this point. And sometimes it has to be an aggressive interpretation because this is where the district is driving, is caught at this particular time. And they want to make sure they have board approval so that they don't get to that point later on that when they're presenting, you have not met. But we did agree that this was going to be the way the presentation was going to go. So at this point, I still think we ought to not micromanage, but only monitor what Dr. Rodriguez presents as his interpretation. And his interpretation should be driven by his philosophy on where we're going as a district. That's the way I'm viewing this.
So Mel, I guess my question is, I agree with that. Are we asking Dr. Rodriguez to interpret each one of these individually? Or are we asking Dr. Rodriguez to interpret it globally?
The whole PE twelve?
Yeah. OE twelve. So are we asking him?
I mean, OE twelve, I think he has to interpret it individually. I mean, and sometimes it's just a blasey, hey, number three, twelve point three, align curriculum with South Carolina standards. I mean, that doesn't, you know, think anything excessive.
Exactly. So he would just say, you know, you know, this, so.
Rubicon or whatever else, Rubicon or whatever else he is using to make that alignment. There's certain, you know, staples that are in place to make that alignment.
Right.
But, you know, some of the other ones, he can't quite rely on, you know, something already in place, especially if he wants to extend beyond what's in place. And he wants to make sure the board is interpreting it that way when it's written.
First of all, I have to say thank you because I had asked Mrs. Robine for us to have this conversation because it helps for media, your questioning and conversation puts it much more in perspective, right? And I recognize that we'll have qualitative information as well as quantitative. Because when I was looking at this, my brain went to where Mrs. Boatwright made commentary that we, it's hard to measure all of these.
Right.
Right? But what I'm hearing is that a qualitative information will be part of this, which takes a significant amount of pressure off the cap. Mrs. Robine, your commentary that, you know, these are a measure of a compliance of a contract that we agreed upon. It makes a lot more sense. And not that I didn't understand the concept, I'm into the details. So I have to say thank you to the conversation because I was stuck on saying, how am I going to do this quantitatively? And I started analyzing too much.
Dr. Stratos?
Yes, ma'am.
Identifying which of the OEs, the numbers, do you want it quantitative or qualitative will also be helpful. So like, if you're expecting something, then we can prepare for that expectation.
That has a measure to it specifically. Yes, yes, yes.
But that's backwards.
Yes.
Because it's not supposed to be what we expect. It's supposed to be like Dr. Rodriguez and you all.
That's my argument, yes.
How you, so you tell us.
Right.
Like, how you think, which ones you think.
Right.
But that's how I interpret without the Campbell just said.
Yeah.
Look at it with that lens now versus thinking quantitatively that some of these would be impossible to address.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. But I will now be able to share as Dr. Campbell's, you know, sharing, no, we're going to share which way we're going to do, do A or B? Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
One hundred percent, yes. It takes, again, the pressure off the lid of the teapot. Thank you.
Yeah.
Because I was getting too analytical as to how to design measures because that's where my brain was going.
Yeah.
And it also allows, because when you read through it, sometimes we only get to present the PE one point what. And then there are other things that we're doing in our department that we don't get to showcase. So this right here gives us an opportunity to really showcase beyond the PE that, you know, that we prepared historically.
Right. And that's the, you know, some of these statements are very broad and you should be, like, there's nothing, none of these statements have mentioned Kate at all. However, there's areas in here that Kate should be addressed, Kate should be, right?
Number seven.
Number seven.
Number seven, if you look at that perspective, right? Right? So Dr. Campbell said, what happened? If I'm correct, and you correct me, board members, we looked, you looked at all of the PEs because we had stopped reporting on all of them as a division. And now you brought them all back in because some of these, I mean, I had not reported on.
And I think that's, yeah, and I think that when we looked at the work plan, when Mel, when you and I and Tricia came on board and we were on the academic committee, I remember having a discussion about we had maybe twelve components of OE PE one and only two were on the work plan. So our question was, well, how often were these other ones monitored or reported on?
And in the PEs, the previous board, what they did is they selected which components that they wanted to report on. So the example of OE with seventeen, all seventeen would not necessarily be reported out on.
Right.
So and that's what they did with the PEs. So there was a number of times that the whole PE itself was not reported out on.
Right, because it was pretty much, yeah, I think it was aligned to like our focus areas and strategic plans, the ones that they wanted to report on.
Correct.
Correct. And that ties into your interpretation and our interpretation of what we want to hear. If you're saying what we want to hear already and we see that you understand where you need to be going with it and there's no measurable tool, there's no number, you know, quantity involved, then we probably wouldn't want to report on it. Why would we want to report on something that doesn't have any quantifiable measuring stick for us at the time? So that's what, most of those were the ones thrown out as opposed to ones where we obviously need a few more guidance counselors. That's one that we absolutely have to have because the evidence is buried out. The numbers are there and we need to know what you need and why you aren't meeting that measuring stake. So that's, I think that's the reason we go through this first. We have to have interpretation. So and you reach the crux of the discussion when which ones quantitative, which ones qualitative, which one has to have a focus that the board needs to know about.
Right, because these are all board policies.
Right.
OEs are board policies. Ms. Boatwright?
Yes. So I feel like I'm in philosophy class, like I'm trying to, it's so abstract. But what I think, you know, and Dr. Campbell mentioned, you know, that there's things that doesn't get brought to the board because it doesn't fit into a predetermined definition of a PE, right? And what I think would be lovely would be like a great book, you know, you see, you have, maybe Dr. Campbell has a program that she wants to inform the board of, and she says, okay, this falls under a new and innovative program. Right? So OE twelve point seven. And then we track that. And then at the cumulative point, whatever Dr. Rodriguez, you know, as he does that work plan, we can track and say, okay, we had these presentations throughout the year. Does that meet a passing grade rather than trying to do it at one time or to try and define the scope so far in advance that it doesn't include everything? And one of the things that I have read a fair amount about with this model is we really should not be bringing anything onto our agenda technically that doesn't have an OE attached to it because the OE is supposed to keep us from getting operational and to sort of provide a compass point for whatever agenda items. So I would love to see Dr. Stratos and Dr. Campbell, whatever program they feel the board needs to be informed about or they want to get feedback or they want to show that they're in compliance, that they bring this in, say, this is the, this ties into this OE. We track that. And then it's like, you know, getting qualifying points, Mel, to make it to the tournament in basketball, right? You've got so many wins, you make the bracket, you know? And so at that one point in the year, we're not trying to have this massive, you know, qualitative narrative and presentation. But we can look back at the points all along, or if you want to talk about the car driving to the destination, we can look back at all the waypoints and say, here's where we've gotten. So I just don't want to see these kind of huge presentations, you know, that just kind of jump all over the place and then generate a lot of questions, right? I've seen a little bit of that.
Yeah, I think that's the gist of what we're trying to do. No doubt, you know, a monitoring process in which, you know, is continuous in terms of our district goals and our district process, where we're going, how we're going. And we can stop it where it looks like it's not going. And you can advise us how to do better from the district standpoint with suggestions after a presentation or before a presentation. But, yeah, you know, it stops us from monitoring at the end of the year and having observations that are non pertinent early during the year. Because you're going to have designed it where you're suggesting that we have this thing, the map results, something like that, at a certain interval where it could be effective for you, for the district and effective for the board in terms of reading where we are. So, yeah, I agree with that, Ingrid. Yeah, we don't need to be all over the place. We need to have a procedural process. So that's, I think, what Dr. Stratus is trying to design, correct?
Yes.
And I, sorry, I thought you were talking to me.
I know, I apologize.
But my, the way my brain works, which is probably too, you know, concrete, but one thing I think would be great is to track as we do all these academic presentations, if we tie them to an OE and track it, you know, so that we know that that we had seven presentations on OE seven or OE twelve point seven. You know, because we had seven different presentations throughout the year where Dr. Stratos brought all these new programs and we heard about it. And then we can sign off because now we have this list of remember these presentations throughout the year, these programs. And it still can tie into what Dr. Rodriguez ultimately decides is the parameters for, you know, compliance.
I think that, like, if you look at OE twelve ten, we are required by law to approve the calendar every year. And this is, you know, we do that every year. There's that calendar presentation. And this is, you know, we do that every year. There's that calendar presentation. And so that, to me, that OE is pretty, uh, specific. And when it's done, it, you know, again, with the grade book, I guess, idea that, that, that was presented in January or whatever.
That would be like a, a half credit class.
Yeah. And, and that requires a specific vote. And because that's a state requirement, but.
And the OEs will be three party mechanism for the prior year's work. So that's going to be easy as well. So, yeah, yeah.
And we, we do track the current PEs, the cover sheet that you, that is signed off on, that they're approved. They're put in a notebook that we keep saying this, this is what was approved on such a, such a date and so forth. So you do have a sheet that of where you are tracking them.
Yeah.
If you continue to use that, that same kind of, um.
Yeah. And I think that the, um, if you look at the tracking sheets from the other, uh, from what was suggested, it's, uh, got three categories on there, or compliant, noncompliant is written on there. And I can't remember the third, but I, I, I know that in our training, there was a compliance cover sheet that went with, with every, um, OE. So. Okay. Anything else to add for this discussion?
No, I'm, I am, I have clarity and the light bulb has gone off more than once.
Great. Okay. I don't, I don't see any, let me look. Uh, Ingrid, is your hand still up?
Oh, sorry, putting it down now.
Okay.
I was trying to be good about that.
Hey, I know. Believe me, I'm the worst with that. Okay. So moving on to the next, um, topic was generation of committee questions regarding career and technical education. Now, Kate was one of our future topics that was put on here. And I want to go back to what I, what the scope, our approved scope is. Our approved scope is to focus on OE twelve and OE thirteen and other topics as assigned by the chair or the board. So I, it's my feeling that if we want to discuss career and technical education, that we need to find where it fits in the OEs. And say, okay, and I also, my, this is a personal thing of, of mine. I think that the committee, and I know that this was Angela, so we can just start this conversation here and no, no need to, to finish it because she really needs the opportunity to be involved in it. But, um, that if there are things that we want to know about the career and technical education, if there are specific things, we should articulate those upfront before we ask the staff to go and do all that work and, and put something together for us because too often they do all the work and then we say, oh, but you know what? That's great. But this is what we really want to know. You know, I can remember being a principal and going in front of the board in my last district with this beautiful report on my student achievement. And I spent hours on this report and I'd give the report and they'd say, yeah, but what we really want to know is how many kids actually attend tutoring every week? I'm like, wow, you know, if you would have told me that upfront, that's much easier than what I just prepared to, to, to give to you. So that's kind of my thinking behind that. Comments, Mel?
Well, there's a double edged sword in that. One is that if you define it already to specifics, then you don't give them a chance to, to go or tell some of the things that you may not, you know, be aware of or, or sensitive to or, or knowledgeable about. Yeah. Particularly when we're talking about this career thing. But, uh, I, you know, the expectancy and respectability of their professionalism should prevail. And that's where I would, I would not ask for specific questions. I would, I would, you know, ask them to tell us where we are because, I mean, we're quite naive in terms of what those programs are and what they should be about. So if we start asking specific questions, our questions would be as naive as our knowledge base. That's my idea. That's my thought about it.
Well, let's take Kate for example, and I understand you and I, I, I see that side of the story. So there's got to be a compromise there, I think.
Yeah.
Good.
So here's a question about Kate. What's the difference between credentials that you get at TCL and the credent- credentials you get as a completer at our high school level? You know, we, those words are inter, are thrown out that we have these completers and they've earned a credential. Okay. So how is that credential different from what you get at TCL? Maybe it's not. Maybe it's the same. I know I have some constituents that are very keen on uh, having all of our students continue into secondary education and go on to, to TCL. So I need to know, you know, if they're a completer at the high school and have a credential, what does that relate? So those are the types of things that I'm thinking.
Yeah, I understand that type of question. That, uh, you know, yeah, that, that would be, uh, in my mind, extending the presentation. Uh, and I, I wouldn't expect them to bring me that automatically in a presentation of our K program. That would be an extension of the topics and of the que- uh, of, of the presentation in my mind. And, you know, I don't know the answer to that myself. And I don't know if that would define what we need to know as a board in terms of our, our key programs. But, uh, you know, I understand your, I understand that question. But a, an example of that, I mean, we could go all out, all over the place with questions. But the presentation should be their professionalism and what they have and what we have and where they think we need to go with what we have. Because we as board members are trying to extend the opportunities as fullest as we can. If that question came up that you just asked, then somebody I'm sure would be able to answer it. And does it change what we are doing or not would be the much more relevant thing in terms of that question.
Dr. Stratos?
I, and I think you're bridging on language that when we talk and, and, and you hit it, Mel, that the professional doing the presentation should be able to pick up other questions. Right? That hence that's why they're, they're the expert in the field. But I think having an idea of the direction or of intention and that, that presentation may be a little broader in scope. We want to know what you're doing, but we'd like to see get, receive information in X and Y. It would help the preparation and the depth of that preparation versus trying to cover everything. So a, and I'm only speaking from my own perspective and, and watching membership within our team that at the development, we rip things apart question wise in anticipation. But if there was a thesis statement to the essay and yet we could still defend our perspective, our presentation's going to hit what you're, you're, you're looking for, but still provide information to bring our board members on board to where we're going and what we're doing because we do have an obligation to that.
So, um, Ingrid, I see your hands up, but let me just follow up with this just a minute. So I think that if we look at OE twelve, number six,
Excuse me.
The Kate program would fall under this. Ensure that the instructional program addresses the different learning styles and needs of students of various backgrounds and abilities and are available to students throughout the district as fairly and equitably as reasonable, right? So if we said, let's just say, we would like to talk about OE six as it pertains to Kate. And then, um, we, you know, could even say as a committee, you know, that, that in addition to, you know, are there any specific questions while this is, while they're working on getting this? We're expecting an overview. We're expecting it to, to address the different learning styles, the needs, blah, blah, blah. But in addition to that, maybe we have some specific questions. And so that's blending of the two where if there are questions ahead of time that they get sent on to staff, realizing that during a presentation, oftentimes questions come up that hadn't been thought of before.
Yes. Yes. Absolutely with that recognition because I, I would be disappointed amongst our, my colleagues, if we didn't provide depth of information to our board members to provide information. We have an obligation to the public and to our board members who are, are, are dr- driving to success together. We're not, we're not in isolation.
Correct.
Dr. Stratos?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Dr. Campbell? Go ahead.
Yes. Um, I wanted just to add to what you just said about career and, um, technology education for OE six. The first thing that came to mind when I read that is it's a direct correlation or alignment to our strategic plans and what the goal specifically says about Kate education. How do we increase the number of diverse learners? Yes. In these Kate, um, complete, complete pro- completer programs, I'm sorry. And, um, so when I see that, to me, that should be a part of the presentation where we, as it relates to our strategic planning and how it was connected to that specific OE six.
And, and if I made a converse of that is if there was a question on special education, it could also be through that lens on number six.
Yes. Ingrid?
Well, I was responding a little bit back, back, back a few comments ago.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
No, no, no. I just, this may or may not still be relevant, but I feel like what you were saying, Kathy, I totally agree with. I don't want to waste staff's time. Like we are, we run a very, you know, thin staff that has a lot of responsibility. My husband and I get in these fights all the time because he'll be busy and be like, find me the best compute, find me what's the best computer out there. And I'll like do this research and give it. And he's like, no, 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 I don't care about that. I want to know about the grant, you know? So like, so now when he tells me things like that, I'm like, what are you looking for? I'm not, I don't, I don't want him, I, it's not a question of answering specific questions. It's just about targeting. You know, the, the, what we're looking for. So at the end, whoever's preparing the presentation understands what we eventually want to get out of that presentation. Because I do think, and we had this example at one of our board meetings where it was like, wait, this isn't what we were looking for. You know, and then was like back to the drawing board, but I feel like it's unfair to keep sending people back to the drawing board without telling them in a very general sense, not a specific operational sense, but what we want, what, what we're looking for. Was that still relevant to what you guys were saying?
I think so. Yeah. Yeah.
It, it's kind of contradictory to what I think, uh, you know, once we start doing that, then in my mind, we start directing without allowing them to, to have some autonomy in directing the, the, the instructional, the instructional programs. You know, and, and, and that's, that's why I, you know, I'm not, you know, against asking some pointed questions about where we are. How many students are being served? Da, 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 da. Yeah, those things line, which I would expect to be given anyway in the report. But when we start asking about, you know, the completed programs in one area versus the others and qualifications, et cetera, et cetera, I think that we're delving into things that the board don't necessarily need to know. And sometimes we point them in the direction that we don't need to be pointing into because we're not the, the experts in terms of that. We, we are only the, 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 the directors and, 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 uh, support for their instructional directions. That's the only reason I would, I would be against having ten questions lined out that they have to respond to.
If I can jump back in, I don't want to cut the queue, um, but responding directly to the same, I agree. You and I have had conversations, right, about what kind of, how these reports, what information is contained to them, how clear they are, et cetera, et cetera. And, and again, using like an educational analogy, you know, I, I don't want to give a mul- a multiple choice test and say, you know, fill this out and come back or a short answer. But when you assign an essay, like my son's doing an essay on the sinking of the Bismarck right now, you got to have just some sort of a rubric, not necessarily your essay will answer, you know, what year, et cetera, et cetera. But you have a rubric that it will at least, you know, address multiple, whatever it is. So I think what I'm, what I'm saying is just in sense of, I'm very sensitive about, uh, utilizing staff's time effectively. Because we do ask them to go above and beyond for the size of our district. You know, we've, we've looked at that efficiency study. We know that the district staff could use more help. So in terms of being efficient, I just want to, what I think Kathy's talking about, when she would put all this time and enter effort into a, a presentation and then have them say, that's not what we're looking for. So it's not asking questions, but it's giving some guidance as to what should be the rubric of the report.
Yeah. I, yeah, I agree with you there. I mean, not a bland report on the, the K program, but something specific about what we want to get from the K program. I can agree with that.
So it's, it's sort of in between the two ends, I guess.
Yeah. It's, it's, I think it's got to be a combination.
Yeah, it's got to be the combination in which the board doesn't overstep its boundaries, don't get into the weeds of, of, you know, interpreting for the, for, for district. That's where we at. That's why the process we're talking about now. Once we start getting into the weeds of what the interpretation looks like, then we no longer give him the freedom to interpret, you know, it, it himself.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's where I'm, you know, on the fence. And I, I agree, it has to be a, a, a meshing of the two, two directions.
Well, and I, you know, I just brought that up really because I'm a little bit, um, you know, when we talk about future topics for, for the committee, everything that we talk about in this committee per our scope should be related to an OE. It should be OE specific. We should identify the OE and then that's, you know, what, what OE it applies to and, and, um.
Yeah. Because we're the academic committee and it should be relative to, to the instructions and instructions should be the, the completer. The completer of all the activities we have related to academics. So yes, I agree with that. That's, that's our scope. And, uh, you know, we, sometimes we have to be directed when we need to go deeper into that scope, even e- even beyond the OEs or, you know, for example, the study of elementary schools one through eight, the success of the schools going up to grade eight. You know, how far does that relate to the OEs and which one do we tie that into is our example of, you know?
I don't think it's here, Mel.
Given directions, huh?
Yeah. I, I don't think that one's here. I, I don't.
Somewhere in there.
It's not, we took, we took that out of our scope.
Programs though, that, that can fit in there, somewhere in there, ensuring instructional program that best it, it will, it will still be able to fit in there somewhere if you stretch it. That's my point. Yeah.
Oh, got it. Okay. Yeah. All right. Any more discussion regarding the, uh, the topic? Okay. So then, go ahead, Mary. It's Dr. Stratos?
I'm trying to get confirmation. So, but he up- I'm trying, trying to get confirmation soon, but the upcoming academic committee, so would there be a CT presentation coming vote or? I'm just.
You know what, I don't think at this time. I think-
Asking for that.
No, we're not ask, I don't think we're asking for a presentation at this time. Really, I think that, um, you know, I don't know, I, I'm thinking that, um, if there's an AR, if certainly any ARs that would need to be brought forward. And then, you know, as you are working with Dr. Rodriguez to, uh, kind of develop some, um, measurements or interpretate, interpretations, the word, of these, uh, OEs, of the OE in specific. If you wanted to bring those to the academic committee, but really it's a board decision, it's not an academic committee decision. So I don't know where we go from here at this point.
My personally ideally would say to you, Dr. Stratus, is my thought would be that one of those OEs will accommodate that presentation. And you have that, eh, eh, as a part of your plan on how I'm interpreting this and this is where we will do that.
Totally agree with that, Mel. That was exactly what I was thinking. And vice versa, I think the board can come and say, we want a presentation on this. Like, I think Angela wanted a presentation on, on Kate, right?
Uh, yeah, that could be true, but if, I, I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking process more so, you know, how ideally, the ideal coverage. And if I understand- They all could pick into what we want and that's what we will do eventually. I want this and I want that as a agenda item. But ideally, if it's laid out when we're gonna see it, then we'll know that we're gonna see that next month anyway, because that's how they interpreted, that we're gonna get that K review next month. And we'll wait until next month, but if we don't see it any at all in the interpretations, then yeah, we can request a item. My thing is, let them design the instructional part. And that, to me, is a part of the instructional part. As opposed to we picking, choosing what we wanna see just for information for our constituencies. Let's allow them to design it and see if that design is not complete. Then we can ask for questions to, you know, round out that design. But if we get into the designing part of it and we hinder them from, from being proactive and, and generate their own whole programming process.
I think that sums up the last however long discussion we've had really well because it says to the Dr. Stratus and her team, you have the autonomy, you bring this stuff to us, you decide what we need, you know, and then we'll tie it to a policy and, and, uh, and track, you know, track that and, and look at, at the end of whatever the work plan is, if we feel like. But that gives the, the instructional service department so much autonomy, like, just like you said, Mel, that's what you, you want them to have the autonomy to make those decisions. So I think that's an excellent, uh, conclusion.
I'm sorry, what?
Cause you, as you, as you say, a good landing spot.
Yeah, I, so, going back to, uh, you know, coherent governance, the roles of the committees are to do the board's work and not the, not the administration's work.
Right.
Yeah, so we're gonna let them do their work. And, you know, is there a point that doesn't have to be brought to this committee or go directly to the full board?
Yeah, we just, we just link in the communication as far as I'm concerned, Kathy.
Okay, so, I, 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 then what I'm hearing is, you know what? We leave that up to the ISD if Dr. Stratus says, hey, you know what? I've got this presentation on OE twelve point eight or something that I'd like to present. I want the, I wanna let it go through, I want the academic committee to see it first. Is that what I'm hearing? Yeah.
That's, that's primarily right. I wanna see, you know, this is how it fits into our program. I'm already by you guys because you guys, uh, quote the expert in terms of academics of the board. Because we represent that academic committee of the board. But I don't have to argue with three guys who know nothing about academics. I can run it past you, so the argument can be a little bit easier done when I do get it to the board. That's the way I look at that, yes.
Can I jump in? I'm sorry, I have my hand raised.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 it's my fault. I just wanted to jump in because I think that this stuff should, for the most part, come through operations. I mean, uh, through academics, uh, through the committee so that by the time it gets to the board. Because I think it's difficult for the full board to sort of hammer out some of the specifics so that basically, that when it gets to the full board, you guys have already given it a, you know, worked it through policy and it's pretty much ready to go, so that we don't spend so much time in board meetings. So I think every, in my opinion, as much as possible, should hit the committee first. Just to sort of like a rough draft. I'm sticking with my educational analogies. And then you can turn in the final paper to the board.
But it, it gets brought to the academic committee by Dr. Stratus and her team. We're not sending things out for them to do. They are responding to this OE and bringing the things to us, correct?
Right.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. Oh, I think we landed. I-
We landed.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. I, I, you know, sometimes you just have to talk things all the way through.
I anticipated thirty-minute meeting here today.
I know, I told you. Okay, all right, um, is there a, a discussion of future topics? I don't, based on where we landed, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. I think that's gonna be driven with the overall plan.
Got it. All right, so are we ready to adjourn?
So are we going to meet again in, in May? And that would, your scheduled date would be the twenty-sixth?
That's correct, yes.
Twenty-sixth.
May, uh, May twenty-sixth, Wednesday at four-thirty?
Do you want four-thirty or four-forty-five for Angela? Um, she, she gets off of work at four-thirty.
Okay, four-forty-five?
Four-forty-five, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Robin, for remembering that.
Okay.
Okay, all right, now are we ready to adjourn?
I think we are moved to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your patience. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good one.